United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, everybody.
Morning.
Carl and Peggy there out in Ohio today.
Representing us.
Yeah. Uh, Jamaica Conference. Okay, can I get a-
I'm making motion to move the adjournment.
I'll second that.
I have a first and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, uh, approved the minutes of seven seventeen.
I looked through here, uh, everything seems to be in order except the...
Twenty percent thing on the driveway?
Uh, no, that probably finds the mailbox thing. I don't know, it's a very small technicality, but the proposed wording change. Yeah, I'm all for doing something about mailboxes. I wasn't, I did not vote for that it was just a standard policy, the county was replacing them. So, I don't know if that was-
Oh, it showed it was, you didn't-
Yeah, it says unanimous, uh, all voting aye. I mean-
Yeah, you voted against it.
I voted aga- I, so to clarify, I mean, I voted for, yes, we addressed the mailbox issue, but I didn't, wasn't really in favor of just blanket, blanket replacement.
And then one other thing, I think on the driveway policy, we are not paying for twenty percent of the driveway. We're increasing the cost.
Yeah, we, yeah, that would be wonderful, I'll go, I'll put a couple-
That needs to be changed under, you see that there?
Okay, so what do you want to change that?
That, that was supposed to read that we are increasing the cost of the, installing the driveways approximately twenty percent.
Increasing costs by twenty percent?
Yeah, not paying for twenty percent.
Right.
And the ordinance number five for the mailboxes was not a unanimous, it was four one, or three one, excuse me.
There again, that's kind of, you know, I, and that comes out in minutes like this, it's like I, yeah, I'm for the something, but I'm not for a blanket. Put a mailbox back up.
Okay, with those corrections in the minutes.
I wouldn't, with those corrections, I approve, I moved and approved.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you. General public concerns. I don't think we have anyone in the general public today. John? Okay, we, we had, uh, some conversation here a couple of weeks ago in the CCI, and we hope that John draft a little letter down to Brian Brinkton, section-
Okay.
Regarding our position with the, uh, master matrix, I guess.
Does Phil Howard, you doing the secretary work?
I, I'm used to taking notes, I don't have a problem taking notes. It's just, I'm the only one that can read my writing, so. So there, that would be about changing the code section that says counties can't touch, um, confinement operations. Is that, is that what you-
Would actually say that in there?
Yes. Yeah. It's, um-
Yeah, that'd be what we're looking for, is that?
It's pretty clear, um, we don't, counties do not get to make any rules, any ordinances addressing confinement operations. I mean, there's, it's clear, there's cases that say, we don't touch it, um, so that would be, I mean, I, my understanding, their frustration, and please stop me if I talk too much, I apologize, but their frustration because we have no say in this process, other than scoring-
We're supposed to oversee it, but we have no say.
Right.
Yeah, so if you see something, even if it's in the master matrix, and you make mention of it, it doesn't make any difference, right?
Well, it-
We've cited some examples, Dave in particular.
I think with the last one that went down to Des Moines, there was a little bit of confusion on what happened with that, what, my understanding is, they filed a manure management plan, and some of the fields overlapped. You, you are not allowed to have the exact same manure management plan for two different sites. So, my initial understanding was, they filed the exact same manure management plan as another site. That wasn't correct. Per the DNR's lawyers, administrative rules, you can overlap fields, but you can't have the same manure management plan. So, if they file one that has, and they get their manure management plans, like the one we're dealing with, they had the agreements done in two thousand seven, two thousand eight, long time ago, and they were expanding, they were expanding one. So, they overlap fields, and then what happened in, between the time of us appealing and going down to Des Moines, is they changed the fields that they were using. And they're allowed to do that, so if we score the master matrix fail because they put in the exact same manure management plan, and they, they change it, they don't have to tell us, they just have to do it, so when it goes down to Des Moines, to the DNR board or whatever it's called-
EPC?
The EPC, yeah. EPC, uh, they can, they can have a new one and say, that's fine now. Or when they have, they send it to the DNR to re-score, and they have a different manure management plan, then that would pass. So, in that one, it, it happened and we looked, I think the board was sympathetic to, to our position, in that we're trying to deal with a bunch of new confinement operations coming in, or expansion of existing ones, and we have a part-time planning and zoning administrator, we have a board that, I think there's been one since I've been here, and there's been six in two thousand seventeen, so it's not something that they're used to, and it's a lot of time, but you've seen the applications, or if you haven't, they're this thick. And you're looking at all kinds of difficult things, and there are hundreds of pages of regulations for the confinement operation. What Melody's tried to do is streamline the process, and I think the reason we are seeing problems is Select Farms, which appears to be the main player, and is the one that is driving through the, the applications, they don't care what our concerns are, they don't care what we're asking them to do, they're not going to do it. They made that pretty clear in Des Moines, that whatever we've tried to do to, you know, submit more copies, record the manure management plans, record the easements to say you can spread manure on these farms. Because if you're gonna buy a farm, you probably wanna know if they're subject to manure management plan or not, but, so we asked them to do that, and they're, they have no intention of following that, no intention of, of helping us out, and one of the board members in Des Moines said, why don't we try to be good neighbors, you know, if they ask you to plant trees, plant trees, if they ask you to file six copies instead of one, why can't you do that? And Iowa's select position was, we don't care, we're not doing it. So, that, that puts us, I guess, at a disadvantage, because if we had somebody that was willing to work with us, you know, we could talk to them about, okay, well, what about planting some trees, what about trying to hide this from the street, what about, um, using the new technology to help with the smell, to help with the, the air, the odors, the air pollution, however you wanna define it. You know, that's how, how much it sounds, that's how we get most of the things done that we get done, is by working with other people and trying to come to a solution, whether we are supposed to or not. So, Len-
Well, I think the biggest thing is, is, in my opinion, if the state wants to continue to let, allow the counties to have the ability to regulate, or rule, or oversee, or whatever term you wanna use, then we ought to be able to have the ability to tell them that this wasn't done the way that the rules, as you, the state, want it done. So, we weren't doing anything what we consider out of the ordinary-
Right.
There was too many hog site, or too many buildings on, for their amount of acres that they had. They changed it, and all they had to, would've had to done was tell us that earlier, and we wouldn't have went to Des Moines.
Right, and I think that's-
But that's the only way we have to police, right?
And I, I think you're right, and I think it's concerning when someone files an application, and you're relying on them the entire time to follow the rules, to do things right. And, and they file an application, and not only do they not care what Humboldt County's asked them to do, they're, they don't plan to do anything, anything more than they have to, and at the end of the process, they don't care what Humboldt County said, because they're gonna get this done anyway.
That's pretty much the summary of it.
Yeah.
You know, and that's really, you know, hard to change the hearts and minds of people, let alone huge corporations, but that's kind of where I asked, like, we said, we're not reinventing the wheel, we don't necessarily wanna change the master matrix, I mean, but we just want a little say-so, that, you know, we're policing it, what-
Right.
We don't look out just, yeah, we, they follow everything, everything meets all the stack of application approvals and all that, the time, but, you know, we don't represent just people building livestock facilities, we represent higher county, we want those done properly.
Well, the people of Humboldt County expect us to do the job that we are supposed to do, um, making sure that those few things that we can oversee are done. And if we don't, then we're negligent in our, and I would think the state would be similar, you know, when they don't allow us to have a say, and, you know, if we're just gonna drive down there and they're gonna throw it out the door, then it's kinda like, what is the sense of driving down there?
It's just like rubber stamping them as they come in the door, why haven't I meeting our boards? Rubber stamp it, let it go. Because they're not gonna get anywhere, you're gonna have to approve them.
Right. And, you know, even, even here, when I think it was reasonable to score the master matrix that's failing originally, uh, they, even if it were a problem, they fixed it, and they didn't even have to tell us, and they, you know, that's, that's the worst part of it, I think, there's a lot of bad feelings on this one, because it, it's no fun to try to, to make a confinement operation more powerful for people, and then just to be told, not only are you wrong, we don't care what you have to say, we're not gonna listen to it, and we're gonna do things how we want them to do, and our request is that you not be allowed to score the master matrix again.
Right.
That wasn't granted, and that's just a throw-in, but-
Right. Well, the gist of this, when we have John here, is to get word to our senator representative, and we're hoping to get them here, obviously, before the next legislative session, to visit with us. They're the ones, they're our voice, our voice, and the whole, their area's voice, it, isn't that kind of the gist of it? We wanna, we wanna visit with them, they're the ones that are in Des Moines, that's the state side that we have, I don't know, some issue with, what's going on? And I think it'll be very interesting, I know, I think we've all briefly checked in with them.
Yeah, that's, that's what we want in this letter, just invite them to come and talk to us, and see what we can put into, well, unfortunately, we can't have any ordinances asking for them to, or telling them to record their manure management plans-
Right.
Which I think is ridiculous.
I, I think-
And we, when the building is supposed to be built on a certain spot, it should be built on that spot.
And the thumb of your hand, even the, the procedures that are in place, they'll do the bare minimum, say, we're good, you know, you, you're, we don't care, and that no care attitude, you know, the good neighbor policy, that's, you know, that's really what we're, what we're looking for, so hopefully they, we can get those two, it'd be nice to have them both at the same time.
That's how, I guess I would start, like Rick said, with the invitation to come and maybe give us, um, their view as to what, um, what is the proper procedure when Melanie finds something, or, um, and there's a complaint, what is the proper procedure, so we know how? Because it, it really doesn't pay for us to have, pay three people to drive down there, use a county vehicle to drive down there, and pay them, and sit down there, and by the time they walk in, the decision's made, i- it's ridiculous.
Yeah. And, I think, just logistically or time-wise, hopefully we can get Mike and Tim here at the same time, I think we'd get a better conversation, better information, because we, we, that's what, you know, that's what they're there for, you know, we're the county going to the state level, they're at the state level, let's see what the heck, uh, we can get feedback on their side. They, they've been immersed in this since they've been, you know, down in Des Moines, so hopefully that's a good, good route to go.
Right, and as frustrating this process was, I think everybody involved in it learned a lot more about it, and how it's pretty much stacked against us.
Well, yeah, that's what we're, we feel.
I mean, we failed the master ma- we failed the master matrix, and, you know, they can, and I suppose, you know, if I ask for a building permit, and I provide plans, they're terrible, and they say no, and then I fix it, if they still say no, I guess I'd be frustrated, but here they fixed it, they didn't have, they didn't have to tell us, they didn't tell us, and, and so we, we're not used to being in a situation where someone said, I'm gonna do this, I don't care what you have to say, because normally we have a say in it, or if we don't, we can figure out who has a say in it, and they'll listen to us, and here it's, they're probably not gonna listen to us, they don't care.
It seems that way.
And that's what's so, I guess, frustrating.
So, is this basically the gist of getting a letter to both those gentlemen?
I think so.
Can, kind of, fairly flexible, I mean, if not something, they don't have to be here next week if they-
No, they don't, they don't have to be here at eight thirty next week.
No, that'd be-
They can meet with them.
Fine, but, uh-
Or even if, I don't know what their Saturday's-
And then what if, yeah, I'd even mention in if they wanna put two, three counties together, meet with a bunch of us, that might be more advantageous for their time.
And Webster fits the same problem.
Yeah.
But keep it, yeah, the, the county to the state level is where we're, we're at right now, so, yeah, other, a couple other counties or something that really specific-
I don't know if he's got concerns, and Webster's got concerns?
That would be fine, yeah, I think we could make ourselves available, one way or the other, either ob- obviously at our normal meeting, or-
Or at a-
That's easier for them, for both of them, and they, like you said, at the multi-county get-together, I think we'd accomplish this either way, as long as we're kinda walking north.
That's good.
And I want her to send a copy of this to Webster and Pokie and see if they're-
We could do that.
Just show them what we sent to them, and, uh-
We can do that.
We appreciate your time.
Thanks, John.
Yeah, I, problem, anytime you wanna move the meetings to Tuesdays, I'm more than available Tuesday morning.
Yeah, I'd like Tuesdays better, too.
Well, we can bring that up, put that on the agenda, we can have that discussion.
Thank you.
Thanks, John.
Thanks, John.
All right.
If you're gonna have it on Tuesday, it's not gonna get in the papers.
I know, that's why, because that's our issue.
Is there always somebody that's gotta work?
Just, oh, it's all tactical, isn't it?
Yeah, and I guess we can talk about that.
I don't get your rate on top Thursday.
We don't print it, so, depending on somebody else, I guess, that's good.
Sounds like a guy.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, thank you, John. All righty, let's see, let's go down and do the, a couple of these things down here. We got accept and place and file sheriff's quarterly report for, uh, quarter ending June thirtieth, seventeen. Should be on top.
I'm making motion to accept Dean's printed report for the quarter ending June thirtieth.
That's I could have.
Okay, I have a first and a second, any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Accept and place and file the sheriff's annual report for the year ending June thirtieth. It's like a lap site.
I'll make a motion. Accept his r- annual report.
Second that motion.
I have a first and a second, any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Accept and place and file the auditor's quarterly report for the quarter ending June thirtieth, twenty seventeen. Did Peggy have any comments?
No.
Okay.
I'm knowing Peggy, if there was something, an issue, she would've left a message, so I'll make a motion to accept the auditor's quarterly report.
Second that motion.
I have a first and a second, any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay. I think what we can do is we can go into drainages now.
Want to do the claims before?
Oh, yeah.
Well, we got three minutes yet?
Yeah, we can do that. Okay, what do we have for claims here?
Wow, I wanna make sure those are the right numbers, but-
That's a big number.
Yeah, I had four, six, per general, four sixty-two, five seventy, point six-six. Drainage, I had one forty-two, three fifty-one, seven, five.
Those are the correct numbers.
I'll make a motion to approve them, claims.
I'll second that.
I have a second from Dave, any discussion on claims? All in favor?
Aye.
Guess the results, the one question did-
Well, just wondering about, did the sheriff have an accident or conservation aid?
There was two vehicles repair.
Yeah.
Uh, it's probably hail damage, I'm gonna guess, 'cause I know they did-
Still coming back on that?
What's that?
They still coming back on that, 'cause I thought we planned to file, or had-
We, I know we had some claims earlier, but, uh, I hadn't heard anything.
Well, I hadn't heard anything either, but there's a record, service call, or pickup call for a record.
Record call, and then there's one for the conservation, one for the sheriff.
I didn't know.
Well-
Should be under jergens there.
We'll have to, we could call and ask you about that.
I don't think it jumped them that much, but I guess those are, I noticed those two.
They just like to know why.
What the numbers were and what happened.
And where's Eagle Drainage?
Eagle Drainage is, uh, out of Eagle Grove, I think. They, I know they did some work out here on, um-
With Thor?
With, by Thor.
Okay, there's a bill on there for them, but I didn't recognize where it was from.
Okay, uh, all in favor of claims?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, I need a motion to go into drainage.
I'll make that motion. Second that.
First, second, we are, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, we'll move into drainage.
Jason, I have a new grandson, you know, how much you weigh?
No.
Ten point five six pounds.
What the heck?
Yeah.
How's the mother doing?
Mother's doing awesome.
Well, congratulations.
She, uh, she kinda said the same thing when I, when over at a babysitter night, I said, uh, I walked in, he's sitting there, and I, holy-
How much is he weight, ten?
Ten-five.
That's a big baby.
I weigh ten-eleven.
Well, you go-
I come from the rock. The only problem is, I don't think I'm trying to calculate the numbers out there, I don't think there's any way I can hang on to help coach. Fifteen years, has he pushed me out in a wheelchair, I don't think so.
Well, good deal, everybody's good, though.
Yeah, he's home and-
That's amazing.
Doing well.
Excellent.
He's had a hair, man, he's got lots of hair.
That's half wrong.
That's what my mom said.
Yeah, he's got a good, a heck of a good start, I mean, he's probably got teeth, too.
She said, uh, the good thing was, is there wasn't a whole lot of money spent on formula. We had you one, one week of formula, and then we sat you with the rest of the gang.
Yeah. Well, formula wasn't gonna cut it, it's probably not gonna be, what's his name?
Isaac.
Isaac?
Yeah.
Like Chu?
Mm-hmm. Well, they wanted him to call him Isaac, but they, they let it, their daughter's name is Aria, so they, oh, they're Isaac, Isaac. They said, what, what happened to Bruce, and John, and Bill?
Yeah, that's long gone, we're in the millennial age of naming names. Obviously, you know, Rick came from back in the day. Richard-
Oh, very common.
Yep.
Very, very-
All right, Rick, if you have an age, that's okay that your name isn't, you know, something we don't understand.
Okay, good morning, Rick.
Good morning, Rick.
We got, um, BD thirty-three, Branch D first.
Well, we had this last week.
Hey, I said, is this part of your issue?
No, but, no, 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 not the problem.
Um, McLaurin Engineering submitted Holland's bill for the reinstallation, or actually installation of the additional footage. The amount comes to twelve thousand, six hundred and sixty dollars and forty-eight cents. It needs an approval of that.
Is that installation of-
The thirty-inch?
Is that stated on there?
Yes. At fifteen dollars a foot for four hundred and forty-eight feet, um, one Y, thirty-inch bend. And then the pile connections. Just, and, uh-
Well, this was talked about when we, wasn't it?
Yes.
So, this wasn't-
That was probably the delivery of that product.
Yeah, I think it's, it's gonna be, doesn't it?
That's the little question I did, you can pass that around.
What's a lump mean? I thought it was a lump-er.
Lump, usually lump sum is terminology used.
It's the concrete collars and labor.
Oh.
They didn't break out how much for the labor, and how much for the collars, and it's just lump sum for that item.
I can pass that around, we got it. And one other issue we have to clear up with them. Eric recalls that when they, the initial pro- project, they come up like forty-eight feet short.
Correct.
Okay, so Holland, they had the pipe delivered out there, so there's, there was, they had already laid four hundred feet delivered, the forty-eight, and then they, they never laid that forty-eight feet, 'cause at that point they realized, wrong elevation, so, right?
Wrong elevation.
Okay, so now we have this forty-eight feet out there that never got laid, and ISG, I have no idea why, they will not submit a payout estimate for that forty-eight feet of pipe. I don't know. But, so, there's this forty-eight feet of pipe that hasn't been built out to Holland. Holland's paid for it, but they haven't gotten paid by the county for the forty-eight feet of pipe.
We had no bill on it, then?
No, we haven't got a bill, and I am trying to straighten it out with ISG that all they have to do is submit a pissed change order for that extra footage of pipe, and he says, well, we've already done that, we replaced it with thirty-six. Sure you have, but also, the original that they laid out was thirty inches, which needs to be paid for, 'cause it's been installed in the ground.
Right.
So, it's just a little confusion between them.
Well, the easiest thing, was there six extra pipe out there?
Yeah. There wasn't extra, that was what was needed to get to the Y.
I know, but there isn't any pipe out there now.
No, it's all-
It's all buried.
It's all been buried, right.
So, then it has to be built.
It needs to be built, that's all that's-
The contention, I mean, it's not even a contention, they didn't have enough pipe, which, the pipe that got laid was a different size-
Yeah.
Than would've been, because of, like you said, Rick, they found out that the elevation's off, so then they did get, obviously, the correct-
Yeah, they're not asking to get paid for pipe they didn't lay.
Right.
They just wanna get paid for the pipe that they did lay.
So, what-
How are we gonna get that through to-
Well, I'm in, I'm on, I'll be on the phone with them this week.
What's the, you know-
That's my, that's my thought.
And we're not really-
We're not arguing with them.
Not really, I'd argue the fact that, going along with this full malfunction, they have calculations, but be that as it may, they did get, and what size would that have been then the-
That was the original thirty-inch.
Original thirty-inch?
Yeah.
But the, they were shorter, the original thirty-inch?
Yeah.
So, that, they never got, so wouldn't it be thirty?
No, they did get the thirty-inch delivered out there, 'cause if you, if you look on McLaurin's bill, they laid four hundred and forty-eight feet of-
So, they did get-
The pipe got delivered.
And that, the thirty-inch pipe?
Yeah.
And when the problem arose with the elevation and that, these pipes were actually sitting on the ground.
Yeah, they never got-
Okay, they did get-
Yeah, they never got, they never got laid.
Okay, they did, they were there, but then obviously didn't get used.
Yeah.
A different sized pipe was used to get the additional distance.
Right.
That's been taken care of.
Yeah. That was in change order number two, that we took care of that fifty-two thousand dollar one.
Right, right, so that took care of that.
Yep.
But they never got paid for the original...
The extra forty-eight...
The extra pipe they paid for, never installed it, so there's no installation fee for the thirty inch.
Right.
Well, we are paying it, 'cause it got installed upstream, to finish it up. It's not that big of a deal.
No, it's not.
It's not that, really, in the grand scheme of this mess, it's not that big of a deal.
No, basically, I just gotta get them to write a change order in for that, that, for the extra forty-eight feet of pipe, and send it to us, so we can pay it, so they, so we can pay Holland. Just paperwork, basically.
Well, I wonder if there's some, because the agreement on the thirty inch pipe that was installed upstream, is what, basically what we're paying for here. Something to the effect that that would be half price, or whatever our agreement was with ISG. We gotta reduce cost of the pipe. Are they, that could be a pending, that they obviously don't wanna pay, you know, because technically, they would, they would pay for the extra pipe, the thirty inch pipe, and then that would have been back to us at...
Well, they would pay, I can see your point.
See, I mean, we would pay for it, but they would pay, there again, it doesn't, if you figured the dollars of it, it's thirty inch, how many extra pieces?
Forty-eight feet.
Forty-eight feet, yeah. A thirty inch pipe, so the dollar amount, but technically, that's half price to us. We didn't, it is installed, and that's four hundred and some feet that we're paying for the installation right now, that's fine. So there again, that would technically be them paying the full price, we're paying half of the price.
Yeah, and that's probably why they don't wanna do it.
I'm just guessing, and may I talk about a mucked up, screwed up deal, but in, in the grand scheme of all this, that's a pretty minor part of it.
Yes, it is, and I'm just trying to get it straightened out with them.
So on the other side, is this done, so let's just get it carried out.
They're getting it.
Yeah, I'm getting a, did you get an email from Holland with the cost of the thirty inch pipe? Okay, she's supposed to be sending Patty's. So, so I know what we're working on.
Is that something you know, I mean, you already mentioned to them, I know you talked to them...
I talked a long variety about it.
Can you follow up on that and say...
I was ready.
Again, I, I think I, given the whole business that we've been sorting through, that's probably some contention to kind of weasel out of a few dollars.
Yeah.
As they, for their nature of this whole project, it shouldn't be that big of a deal. Don't really wanna get this wrapped up, get it done and put it to bed.
Yep.
So with that, you need an order to approve that...
This payout estimate done from McClure, or is it through McClure?
They just, yeah, they suggested to Holland, yeah.
Yep, this seems to be in order for what was done, I would make a motion to approve this.
Okay, I'll first, second by Dave, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries. Okay, now I'll move on to BD eleven sub five. Which is your ball?
Yes.
Or it's not Bruce, it's just Rick.
Um, this is the time set for the hearing, but based on our conversations, you were gonna extend this, um, continue the hearing?
Yes.
And I can do just a quick review of estimates that have been done and that kind of thing. You're all aware, we looked at following the old route of the system, and came up with an estimate, the hearing scheduled, um, very expensive project, because it's a long, narrow sub-district. In other words, there's not a land, not a lot of land paying, so it's got to be very expensive. Landowners had Mansky look at an alternate system, which would basically replace the south half of the existing, and take it to a different outlet. And he, I think you've seen the drawings that he put together for that. Basically, just doing a parallel line with the old one, and then about the middle of it, take it up to an open ditch. Some digging has been done on that ditch. Don't know, it looks like they've kind of created a little bit of a pond, like some more of it should be cleaned out. Now, before that water can be taken that way, there's several steps they have to take. Typically, you don't annex within a district, but this sub-district one is where this, I have eight hundred and twenty-four extra acres are taking, would be taken. So, there has to be a hearing with the people in sub-one, because some of sub-five would have to be annexed in. This eight hundred and twenty-four acres would have to be annexed in, because none of their water gets there now, but with this system...
It's going to a different ditch.
Yeah, it all ends up in, in main ditch eleven, so by the time this sub-district ditch gets there, then it's the same water. But this north-south ditch and the east-west one that they're gonna tie, or want to tie into, this is all new water to them, eight hundred and twenty-four acres. So, um, person really should look at the capacity of the ditch, it's hard to overload a ditch with the tiles, so it's probably not a problem. But the profile of that ditch should be checked, they'll need to start annexation procedures, so I guess the decision needs to be made about how they wanna look at this. They can't just install this privately with, still without annexation, so, because of the change in acres. So there's, there's some, several steps they have to go through, even if they decide to go this way. It's a good outlet, uh, it gets it to an open ditch, but there's just several steps they have to go through. I did do a quick and dirty estimate, uh, if this was a county system, um, what would it take to do this project? Now, I came up, I did total estimate construction, I added, uh, for engineering legal publication, and allowed for classification of this area. I had easements in there, I had almost sixty, I had almost sixty thousand in there for easements and interest at thirty-one. I came up with a total of seven hundred and sixty-six thousand. So, considerably more than Mansky had as an estimate. There's some issues there that would have to be worked out, Mansky's asking for the county to pay ten thousand towards road crossing, that's different than your policy now. Uh, and I know you've talked about that some, I don't know if you've reached any conclusions or not, but, um, I guess there's several hurdles to go through. And if there's more information we can provide, uh, before the time you extend this to, we're delighted to provide it, we have, it'd be quick. We have nearly everything available that I think you would ask about. I did send that letter, um, in early, fairly early in July, about differences in private and county systems.
Rick, I just looked at that a minute, can I pick a quick peek at that again?
Yeah, yeah.
Digging through my file?
You bet.
Yeah. So, and thank you for, yeah.
You bet, I just, it, it, there's just, it's more complicated than it sounds initially.
Well, here's the overall question, 'cause the, the big thing was, you know, drainage district versus private, which you just succinctly described. If it's in agreement to keep it private, and agreement is the landowners, and they say it's private, so then do they privately hire the annexation report done, or is that?
It's, it's, it's something, it really gets confusing.
It will get confusing, um...
I, and then the second two questions also, you know, like you said, it takes that extra eight hundred and twenty-some acres...
Yes.
And then also an engineering report on the ditches. Ditches and or ditches, 'cause there's two.
Yes.
Two, like I said, probably not a concern, but, and then they need additional clean out, so on and so forth, but have, you have to have that before you can dump something in.
Right, right.
Even though it probably won't be private, so does it, those two things, is that fall back on, if it's private? You know, if we were talking to you about, this was a drainage district issue, you know, we, this is the thing, so does it just shift over to them privately? And then they have to follow these protocols?
Here's, here's my issue with that. We're here looking out for the districts, District eleven's good, good, I mean, we're, we're watching out for them. It wouldn't take a lot to put an annexation report together, we have all the information, it wouldn't take a lot for us to check that ditch. We have, we did the clean out of eleven, um, I think it'd be good to have some independence there, as far as, yes, they could work with an engineer to size these tile and everything. But as far as the district's interest, it'd be nice if that was some, if it was, for example, us, and it's not a, not a lot of money, I'm not looking at this as a big deal for dollars, but I feel like we'd look out for the district, um, in this case.
Well, obviously, that's, 'cause it is a drainage district.
Yes.
We do look out for that. I guess another thought is, there again, we don't wanna step on anyone's toes.
Right.
That, 'cause if it's a land, group of landowners, and they're, they are leaning towards a private project, and they don't wanna...
They can look it up, that's great, yes.
Step on their toes.
Right.
I could see, well, a, a little bit of, like you said, they do need an annexation, they do need a, an engineer report on the ditches.
Yes.
Do we get goofed up by still doing that as a drainage district, like other things that we have to address? And say, here's the report that goes back in payment through the drainage districts, it's just a starting point.
Right.
Doesn't mean you do anything one way or the other. That's the responsibility of us looking out as a drainage district, here's your information, you know, then do you proceed with the private installation of the tile?
I believe, I'm trying to think this through, they, they probably have an obligation to pay for the annexation. Since this is gonna be a voluntary annexation.
Voluntary, yes.
Um, so you'd have to get that worked out, um, and we could figure out an estimate and what that would take. We've, we've got all the watershed information on sub-five, it's just basically the south half of that that would go over, and I've already looked at the acres. I think at the continuation, they should decide how they wanna approach it, and see if they're willing to pay for an annexation report, and I can give them an approximate dollar figure. Because unless they go forward with that, I don't, I don't think you want them to, to go forward, I guess. 'Cause they're obviously draining eight hundred and some acres in, that didn't come in before.
Right, but, you know, you've laid out the protocol, and I think that's power to about, that the people involved that understand that protocol.
Yes.
It does take this, you have to do this.
Yes.
Can't do it otherwise, but they say not to us, to step on their toes or get in the way of a private project. As long as they're aware of this, they can say, yes, we will pay for, we, the landowners, the area, annexation and then engineering report on the ditch. And that's their thing, just like they're paying for the project.
Right, right.
You know, it isn't as cut and dried as anybody would like it to be.
No, 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 that's...
Especially with drainage stuff like this. So I don't know where we are as the trustees to do anything other than we continue this hearing, so, I can't remember what the exact date was.
They, uh, didn't they push it back another two weeks?
Four weeks. I think it was later than that.
It's at least four weeks, they wanted.
Well, let's see, Bruce, you wrote it down, so look out a ways, but, and I guess the twenty-first of August, I believe.
That's what I wrote down too, so...
Is there something we can do, class should do, between now and then, to get information to the parties, the people, landowners?
Yes, um, I've been in fairly regular contact with Carmen Jansen, very concerned landowner, and rightfully so. Her bill would be like over two hundred thousand dollars on the original plan. And she's gonna be talking to everybody.
Right.
And they're trying to work through if it still makes sense to go privately, and, and it would save them some money. So, they definitely wanna at least pursue that far enough to see what it's gonna take. So, I believe some communication before that time would go a long ways.
I agree.
And I think I can come up with the figure for annexation and for the fieldwork on the ditch, so they know what that, would it be involved there.
But there again, if you're doing some work, and like I said, it's not hugely costly, but we know you don't work for free.
Yeah.
Or cheap, but not...
There you go, there you go.
So, are we gonna end up with some preliminary work done, that the district's gonna pay for, and they're gonna say, well, fooey, you know, we were doing this as a private thing, and then are we gonna upset people by sending them a bill for...
Yeah.
You know, it, maybe that's not bad if it ends up being something, they don't pay for something twice. It, it just is kind of a gray area here.
Carmen already submit, paid a, uh, submitted a check for twenty-five hundred or something, to take us into this and see how far we can get with it. We should see where we're at with that, she said to me in one of our, one of our last conversations, well, I'm probably gonna spend all of that, aren't we, and I said, probably. But let us see where we're at, what it might take to finish it, touch base with her. It'd be worth their time, I mean, if it's another fifteen hundred to twenty-five hundred, to know more facts.
Well, I agree with that, but there again, it's not just Carmen, and I understand, you're a concerned landowner, there's a lot of concerned landowners involved here.
Yes, yes.
We don't wanna all of a sudden to, they're thinking a private project, they're kind of moving forward and getting their information along that, and then all of a sudden we levy, and there again, it's not gonna be huge dollars.
No.
But we still levy something back to whatever part of this district or the whole district.
That's where I think I should be talking to Carmen and see if she can get some other support from the landowners. I mean, if a couple of them put up a thousand dollars, I think we'd have it covered.
Well, that, see, then that stays on, that stays on the private.
That's what I wanna try.
You get my concern...
Then we're not spending someone else's money for a private engine.
Yeah, and you have, you'd have trouble, how do you recoup that money if they're not, don't end up part of that sub-district one?
Right, and we don't wanna send someone a bill for something, they say, well, this is not what I signed up for.
No, 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 absolutely.
This, uh, bond has been returned to her.
Oh, it has?
According to our attorney, it's not legal to accept a bond, except only in the establishment of a new district.
Okay, yeah, there's attorney...
Which is kind of an iffy thing, is this a new district or not, so I don't know. He says it was not.
Not necessary.
Well, it's our good, you can still get the money from, this works.
Yeah, anybody can hire a, yeah, hire any engineer company, it doesn't have to be a drainage.
Her biggest concern is how it's going to be handled facilitating this after the, after it's built, installed.
Yeah, who maintains it?
Who maintains it, how does the record stay current? Any billing, there's a couple things in the proposal that she has questions on, I mean, just...
We don't have the authority to chase any of those until it's put in our hands.
Yeah, so she's kinda looking for direction from you guys, even though it's private.
Let me talk to her.
Yeah, because you guys know the district, how is it...
I really think what they need to do is hire an engineer, the landowners do, so they get their, their information, and their, I mean, it's, they're looking for information that's specific to them.
Mm-hmm.
Right, and why should the rest, rest of the district pay for that?
Right, yeah, very true.
I mean, they're, they're looking for information to develop a private system, and why should the drainage district pay for that?
Right.
Well, and that's another possibility, is to, for them just to plain do that, and then if, if you'd have us do, spend an hour or two and review everything, for the, for the interest of the district, uh, let me take care of it.
Yeah.
I think that we touched on communication, it's a great thing, it's time, we decided that it's official, it's a ways out, on the twenty-first of August. I know Rick just said he's gonna be visiting, I know some people involved in this. Try to clear some stuff up, and, and Rick Peterson mentioned my thought too, keeping it on the private side. They, they certainly can keep it in that direction, go through the correct protocol, and then we don't overlap, and start sending bills out to people that... and then we don't overlap and start sending bills out to people that are going to be-
We aren't scheduled to be back on the agenda until the 21st. So you'll have to at least let her know.
We got to extend it to the 21st, if they requested that.
No, I know, but I'm just saying, if he touches base with Carmen and them and gets an okay for that, at least he could get word back to somebody, Trish or something, and said, they're in favor of doing that, so we don't wait until the 21st.
Well, I think, we have bid letting next week, don't we? DD 2 lateral M.
Yeah, I think you're right.
Uh, the 24th, I thought.
Oh.
Is that today?
That should have been today.
Yeah.
Yeah.
They got delayed, didn't they?
I never got any notification.
Yeah, it was delayed because I sent out a notice in the paper and that.
Oh.
Because, why did you, I can't remember why we delayed it.
I scratched everything off except that.
I know.
So I'm here and I'm stopping mad, Rick.
I already sent the original one and I just about had it out and then she sent me a revised one.
Oh, I know what it was. The official publication is now handled through a contracting agency. And they need like 13 days or something to handle the legal part of this. It's different. They've changed the bidding notice requirements. And so that delayed it. I thought it just got delayed a week.
We didn't know that. We thought it was today.
I did too.
The, the bid on it?
We thought the bid letting was today. That's why I'm here.
That's wrong, that's what I had wrote down.
I'm sure, okay, we did with an addendum. Well, I guess I haven't met with you probably since then. But, yeah, the notice, the new notice requirements changed enough that we could not meet them the way we had them. So great it's not till next week, but I can, did we get you a copy of that?
Yeah, I had repoked or sent it to the paper.
Yeah.
I can, I'll check over here.
So I'll just get it on the right day and get the word to them.
Yeah, yeah.
So in regards to District Number 11, Sub 5, we've gone through that. Is there any, are we still okay with the 21st date?
Set the new employment area hearing date for that date.
The August 21st?
That was the request of the landowners involved.
Yep.
Official, it was today.
We get on that calendar.
That's what I got to do. Official extended to-
And we pushed it off, but did we set a time for it, did we?
Nine o'clock.
Nine AM?
August 21st.
Okay, so I have a motion to move, uh, some area hearing report to August 21st at nine o'clock. Can I get a second?
All right, second.
All in favor?
Hi. Then the further discussion would be the further discussion between now and then.
Yeah.
With said parties.
Hopefully they'll have figured out by then what they want to-
That was, that was what I got. I mean, I can understand the private side, they need to talk amongst themselves. Rick brings up very salient, proper points. He's going to do all the, until we talk to the people involved, hopefully they'll be, as he used to say, a good conclusion by the 21st.
Okay, so now we're going to- Yeah, there's that publication issue that we're in some trouble with.
Well, I can be here next Monday, but I cannot be here any longer.
Okay. Shouldn't be a problem.
So when are we going to do it now?
Next Monday?
Yes, let's, Trish is getting the-
She went to get the notice.
Notice, yeah.
Okay. Wish I didn't know that it wasn't great.
Yeah.
He's very, very busy and I'm very busy.
Yeah, there you go, there you go, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, all right, right, both ways.
I'm here. The good news on yours is that we did not hit limestone, so it's not going to be a problem. The one west of you, we're going to have to wait till we can get out in the field and dig it up because there is limestone issues.
Well, I'm glad there's some good news right there.
There you go, that's what I think, I figured that one hurt.
Yeah, that's true.
Yeah. Did you, did you set a time for the 5/11? I didn't know.
Nine o'clock.
I was going to call next month.
That's not even one of them.
No.
Yeah. Yeah, that's gorgeous, but that's not as good as the crop. I'm picking markets, I'm wondering if we can get it all off right. I think a bit of it.
Since this is kind of related to that project, I'm going to give this to you guys. This is the, the project just west of Pipers, yes. And you have to search a little bit, but we have limestone elevations in here. And bottom line on this is that we can serve, we know we can serve Trish's dad's ag well, no problem. Because his tile is high enough, we can get to it. His is the upper left one, Ag Drainage Well Closure, it says with an arrow to it. But the problem is, we dug up the limestone in the south road ditch, just south of there. And that's at the same elevation as the flow line of the ag well to the east. In other words, we can't have our depth out here and serve that ag well if the limestone isn't deeper out in the field. That's the bottom line issue. So.
And you don't know that yet?
We don't know that yet.
Well, for this map, when you're digging out in the field this fall, where are you approximately, where are you going to check?
Well, we'll, we'll check on this route. This is a logical route for elevation wise, this crossways line. That's a logical route, elevation wise for the ground. So we need to get out there.
And that's your concern of the limestone area?
Yes.
Basically that east-west type of route?
Yes, yes, that is correct.
Have you been, well, I don't know 100% for sure on the east one?
East one, the-
East.
East ag well?
Yeah. Are you pretty good to that, to that east-west, you know, short 1,400 feet? Or do you have some other limestone concerns?
That's his concern.
That is the concern. Because we dug it up south of the east ag well and we dug it up south of the west ag well.
Right.
So if we can verify just in this low, this route, couple of spots, that's all it's going to take.
Okay.
So that we can know that we can have this low enough to serve that east ag well.
Right.
Because that east ag well is considerably higher, well, lower, I mean, it's considerably lower.
Lower than the west one.
Yeah, it's like seven or eight feet. So, yeah.
Okay.
To be able to serve that, we have to keep our line down in this east-west portion of the route. So, and this is the area just west of the Piper ground.
Right.
So.
So if there's plant crops out, investigate that area?
Yep, go for it, yep. So we'll, yeah, the, the east project, we'll get that let next week and get someone under contract for that.
Okay, and what time are we going to do that next week?
I have-
9:00 AM.
And that is called lateral 2.
Lateral, yeah.
2M.
31st is that?
Yeah.
Yeah, so the 31st at nine o'clock will be a-
For sure.
For sure. The notices have been sent, we meet all the timetables, yes. And the big thing will be to talk about materials, because we're bidding different materials.
Sure.
So we'll see how those come out.
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
What if they do find limestone in the one west of us? Is it, is it too late for them to?
Tie it to yours?
Tie it to ours?
Yeah.
What, what goes on there?
Well, yeah, there'd have to be a lot of-
I mean, they've already committed, they're not going to go our route, right?
Right, right. I'll have to look at elevations. I don't remember where we ended up on yours for depth.
Because if we, if the project gets started, kind of, I mean, they're out of luck, right?
Pretty much, yeah, pretty much. So I'll look at that elevation. I think I brought, hopefully, well, let's see. Do you have a spec, the spec book for that? Is that something you could put your hands on easily enough?
That's a good thing to bring out.
It is.
For 2M.
Yeah, could you, if you don't mind?
But they al, they already know coming up this line, we don't have limestone issues, huh?
Right.
How do you know?
Well, we don't, we don't know for sure. It's just that we dug deep over here and didn't hit any limestone. We dug down here and we were well above it. We dug down where it crosses the road and we were well above it.
Okay.
So we dug enough other spots to know.
That hopefully there's, they're not going to be a problem.
Right.
But there's no guarantees.
No guarantees at all, no. She's going to get the plan sheet and I can check quickly what elevation we were ending at. Because it's-
You stand out there looking like there's tons of elevation up here down to the ditch.
Yeah, and there, well, and that's, and there is, let's see, 11:49 in the ground. Uh-huh, thank you.
Yeah, 11:63.
Yeah, so.
Or 11:54, I guess.
So there's not, I mean, there's several feet, but, okay, let me look here quick. Now, we're, let's see, we're at 11:57.
That's 11:54.
Yeah, we're ending up about three feet higher than, than their ag well with yours. We wanted to get as much slope as we could, keep the tile size down.
Yes.
So that's what we did.
If, if ours gets wheels spinning and they, they can't go out there and dig up and see where the limestone is at till after harvest, there's no way they're going our route.
No.
Yeah?
Not really, I mean, the, the only thing would be pump. I mean, and that's a nightmare.
Yeah.
So. Yeah, I, I intend to call Mansky today or tomorrow and see. He's good friends, I guess, with these people. Is it worth an acre loss of ground to dig a couple holes?
Because the tile's not going to be big enough if we-
That's right, yeah.
Yeah, what's planned isn't big enough to take the other two in.
No, that's exactly right.
We have a bid letting next week. They're out.
But I'll call Mansky either today or tomorrow. Hopefully I can reach him today and see. Because we could just take a route out there. We could get them within a few feet of where we need to be. So it'd just be the width of a tractor, backhoe probably, to get out there.
Well, you would do that by hand?
I thought, I thought about putting my speed. There you go. Jason in the office gave me a little bad time the other day, last week. He said, how long's it been since your shoes have been muddy? I said, not that long. But no, I'll call, I'll call him and if he's that close, I mean, it'd be worth their time to spend a little crop damage. For this, because they can't, we, we proved we could drain them all that way originally with our report.
Yeah, it could be done, but it takes bigger fighting.
Exactly.
After it's moved, huh?
Not the time, yeah.
I hope they can go off and check.
I hope so too. I hope so too, so. That'd be the absolute best thing to do. Because they could just, I mean, other, their option is to close the ag well and have wetlands there. I mean-
That's the other option, yeah.
Yeah, which could be done, but, no. Because they put a lot of tile into that area. We can see that from the aerial photographs, so.
All right, now we got DD 125 classification hearing. We're going to reschedule that to a later date?
Yes, yeah, and that was a publication issue, I believe, so. What's that, oh, yeah.
What's the later date on that?
125.
125 classification hearing rescheduled.
Well, what?
I'm, I'm waiting for that date to come blurt now.
I don't know, how about?
31st. Did you say 31st?
I fixed you.
Can we do August 21st then, or I'll look for your name?
Yeah.
Okay, we're going to get too much.
First of all, wait, 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 wait.
Do we have to wait that long?
Well, on the pond.
The what?
The pond.
Oh.
Do we, just pass that one first.
Um, okay, I've been trying to talk to Brent Steggy with Denver. He was gone all last week. We talked this morning. For some reason, he's, he, he wants us to write a change order adjusting the quantities for each item in the contract to match final quantities. I said, we can certainly do that. I said, this, this would be the first time we've ever done that with a drainage project. It's usually just handled with the pay estimates. Well, he'd just feel a lot more comfortable if that was done. So I can do that probably this afternoon. But, and he says his subcontractor is ready, is ready to start the dirt work. So I'm going to be getting that change order in his hands. And what I hope to do is bring it next Monday, so.
So he won't start until the change order?
Right, until the change order is written, adjusting all the quantities to final quantities.
Well, if that's what you want.
Yes, an hour of my time, you know, so it's not a big deal.
Let's get it done so that the project's moving and it gets wrapped up.
You think we'll get it before Thursday?
I don't know, I hope so. We can do it-
So I can have it on the agenda Monday?
Yes, I would put it on the agenda Monday because we're going to get it, they're, we'll probably email it. They'll print it, sign it, mail it to us. So, I mean, it can be quick that way. I think we should have original signatures, but we can sure email the change order and get their original signature and have it sent to us, so.
Well, I don't want to rain on anybody's parade, but the guy that owned or is going to have the pond is to the point where he's going to hire his own guy to do it pretty quick.
That's why we need to get it done.
Well.
Well, he's a little beyond myth.
Oh, I'm sure. Oh, this just goes on and on, absolutely.
And I talked, I talked to him Friday and he said, you know, if we don't get something done, I'm about to hire my own guy. And I said, well, we're hoping that all of the signatures and all of the paperwork and all of the stuff that we've been chasing around is going to be done. So I'm supposed to talk to him, or if you want to talk to him, if you will do that. Because if you don't, I'm pretty sure he'll call me to chew the other side of-
Yep. Today.
But, um, he's not very happy when it's been as long as it's been for... I mean, this is one of the first field trips I went on.
Last fall.
Two and a half year, or two years ago.
Two years ago.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, pictures of us down in the ravine where we were pointing out this is where the water level's gonna be and we still haven't done nothing and we can't do nothing with her to finish up one twenty-five until we get something done so that we can levy this.
Yep, yep.
And the meter is running.
Yep, yep.
So...
I will call Mark today.
Next week, Rick, I'm, I'm telling you, if, if it isn't done next week, we'll all be in hot water.
I can't imagine him paying a hundred and twenty-five thousand out of his pocket, but...
I, I don't know.
Whatever.
I can't imagine it either, but I guess at this point...
Yeah.
He said there's a contractor that I won't name, but they're sitting up there and evidently he's already visited with them, so...
Okay.
You might touch base with him and ask him who that contractor was if, cause if this guy that Denver's got, uh, lined up, I'm hoping that they've already got equipment loaded, ready to move.
I'll call Mark today. Um, go through the, what's happened here and, um, yeah, get that put together hopefully this afternoon. There's a lot of quantities and I... We went through quantities with the Denver people originally, final quantities, so I, there shouldn't be an issue. But you never know.
Broke down separately.
That's right. Yep, yep. He wants the final contract amount to match exactly what it actually is comparing the change order to the final payments, so...
Well, let's have that in our hands.
Yep.
Next Monday so we can get that moving.
So with that...
Where are we rescheduling that?
So where are we gonna fill it for what date then? Is that what you wanna stay with the twenty-first?
What is classification hearing?
I had to have it completed, publication. Am I correct?
Yes.
We still got twenty days from today. So, yeah. Cause if it's the twenty-first, then today's the twenty-fourth.
Twenty-eight.
Yeah. But it has to be, yeah, right?
Three.
So when would you get it to the paper?
Now it'll be quite twenty, twenty-eight days, cause it won't come out in the paper until...
The Thursday.
Thursday, the third, to the twenty-first is nineteen days.
Wait.
That pushes to about the twenty-eighth.
Well, that would be right.
No.
Today's the twenty-fourth.
Twenty-fourth today.
Yeah.
I looked at the wrong week, sorry.
Okay, no.
I'm gonna get off the press, yeah.
Even faster.
Yeah, I'm off a week.
So that's the twenty-seventh that'd be in the paper.
Yeah, that should be fine. For the twenty-first? For the twenty-first. Our is twenty-first.
So we're...
Nine thirty, okay.
Reschedule the classification hearing for one twenty-five?
Yes.
Are you gonna do that like at nine?
Well, we have nine o'clock for the hearing on eleven.
And that's probably not gonna be a short one, is it?
I don't know if I mentioned nine thirty. Give it at least a half hour. Put it out for nine thirty on the twenty, I will make the motion then. DD number twenty-five classification hearing rescheduled to Monday, August twenty-first at nine thirty AM. Okay, thank you. You have a motion.
Sorry.
Second by Dave. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay.
All right. Get that work done.
Yep.
Get it to Denver.
To Denver, yep. Yep.
Are you Den, are you guys here for the southern mess out there under that quonset? Or quonset, under that trestle?
Trestle, yes. I've been talking to Doug Marshall, there's, the disc that we were given has absolutely nothing on it. Our guy said it wasn't even formatted, there was no, I mean, it just, nothing. But here's the, here's the bottom line. Um... Yeah, Trish thought it was her problem, but it definitely wasn't. This is that District thirty-eight. Doug Marshall and I have talked about the work out there. Um... And the problem area is the yellow line. Um, it appears. There's a, trees, just gobs of trees along that route.
Along the trestle?
Yes. This is labeled as railroad yet, cause this was done in nineteen-ten and it was a railroad at that point. Um, but the area in question is the highlighted yellow portion. Um... I believe the way to go is a parallel tile to replace it. Um, you can replace it and, you know, if we're avoiding the trees, we have no problem with NRCS in, in us relaying this. So, I'm gonna meet with Doug this morning, he's working just south of town, go over it in more detail. Um, talk about sizing, depth, and I'm, I'd like him to come up with at least an estimate so that we know if we have to go after other quotes or not. He's very familiar with it. Um, I'd like to just, hopefully, he can just do this, but, uh...
Well, the other question I have is up, up above there.
Mhm.
Yeah. Well, not only that, but my, up along that trail, we have the ability to pull all those trees out, don't we?
Yes.
Well, doesn't, what's our conservation guys do? I mean, it's their trail.
I don't think they even know if the tile's running right along there, cause they couldn't find it.
They couldn't, no, they couldn't find it. Um, and there's water coming out of the bank of the hole they dug, but you can't see any tile. Um, the problem is that how do you clear out that old tile of the roots?
I mean, they're gonna have to lay a new tile no matter what.
Yeah.
So why go to the work of tearing out the old one? And you can just go out and...
That's the thing, yeah. Yeah, they, they would have to relay it because it would be cost prohibitive to try and clear the roots out of that length of pipe.
And with the other part of it, in that other district that drains into it?
Up to, yeah. The part that comes from the northwest.
Northwest.
Yeah, that shows as a private tile back then.
There's issues there also.
That's over by Ron Collins's?
Yes.
Cause he's got water issues on that side that's coming from, from the northwest, like she said, and it, it's kinda bothering like there too.
So that tile, let's hook into that one.
Yes.
And...
I believe they said they ran the camera up basically to the road and didn't find any problems that far.
They've dug twice? Marshall has dug out there since we met again?
Oh, okay.
I don't know. I, I didn't know he did.
No, I, I don't know that he did either. They put the camera and ran in north, is what I was told.
Okay.
And didn't see...
Well, I understood it all the way up until we could see the intake.
Yes.
In the road ditch.
In the road ditch, yes.
Well, that sounds like the original story.
Yeah.
You opened up thirty inches since we met up here. Doug was gonna go back to the blacktop and dig and run the camera back north further.
Oh, I haven't heard anything on that.
I haven't heard anything on that either.
No, because he hasn't, he hasn't teed how or anything, no.
That was the, that was the ending story that day, that that's what he was gonna go do.
He was gonna go get the locates done and...
Yes.
That's the way I understood it when he walked out of here.
Well, he described to me where he's working today and it's just a little ways south. I'm gonna go catch him, I'll call him and then talk to him. Um, but that, that would take, look at the area to the northwest? Am I thinking right?
Yes, okay.
Across the field or across the, uh, from, for Dawson's, right?
Okay.
Heiners.
Heiners is over there.
Well, yeah, I believe this ten inch needs to be replaced with, by a new parallel tile. And then whatever we have to do to check the north to the northwest.
Cause there's something, a tile that's going straight north apparently. That isn't on here.
Yeah, didn't they dig into that even or dug down to it? I can't remember.
I think that's the tile that he was in.
Okay.
When they were doing the video thing and then the intake is up here.
Okay.
In the road ditch. But it's not listed on, in the map during the permanent that I've seen.
Right.
On the district, so... Credit or what? But apparently, the other district must be draining into one of these and then we're gonna hold it back.
Well, the last time Dennis, you guys were over there, that thing was still running damn near full, right?
Well, the big one has got about five inches in it. And the one that I'm concerned about coming from the east and the trees, that thing's still running.
So, with what low rain we've had and it's still got water backed up from somewhere?
Yeah.
Well, the pressure coming off of, uh, Dolly Bundy's, the, the county stuff, it's gotta be coming from over there, but the pressure on that tile and come up, bubble up through the ground, if it's six feet deep, seven feet deep over there, that's still a lot of pressure to come to the top of the ground and run across that hill through those trees.
Right.
Well...
What I don't understand is why they can't find that tile?
Well, trees.
Well, you could dig, dig in the, in between the trees and see if you can find it at least.
Well, that's what I meant, but I don't...
Well, they, they found it further east.
Yeah.
What they can't find is where it taps into that thirty-inch tile.
Right, right.
That connection.
Yeah, connection, I mean, there's no connection. Maybe it may be right there, but all the remnants of the catch basin they dug up, all that clay, all that cement tile, there's no remnants of any kind of connection there, a tee or an elbow.
Maybe that thing doesn't even connect to it. Has anybody looked, does it go cut to the river? Maybe it goes under the trestle there and goes through the river?
Well, we discussed that because in the twenty-some years we farmed that, we never had this issue with the, the south side of that trestle, the side hill being spongy like and water running out of that also. But there's no sign on any map that anybody can come up with that there's a tile.
Well, Scott said when he said that, hey, there was what, two or three spots where he almost got stuck with the muller.
That's what, that's what I was wondering, maybe that tile doesn't connect to the other one. Maybe it runs all the way, way through the river on its own and it's collapsed out in there.
Well, if this thing goes back to nineteen what?
Ten.
So was it put in before that and nobody mapped anything? I don't know.
Yeah. Well, at the time this was put in, they hooked up a...
Old tile.
Old tile. Sixteen inch.
Oh, that has to be really big old.
Yeah. That dash line over on the left edge kinda there, the dash line says main. That was an existing tile they used as part of their system.
Yeah. That means here, that came from the other district.
That's the northwest.
Doug and I did not discuss anything further towards the river or anything, but we talked about this ten inch line and that that has to be a problem with all the trees.
And yeah, if it runs through there, you know darn well it's full of roots.
Oh.
If it does run that way.
Yeah.
But if it cuts right through the dang truss, through the tracks there and goes on to the river on its, on itself...
Well, maybe the thing, maybe it'd be worth the expense of having him go into those trees and try and find it.
Yeah, see if it actually is in there.
Yeah.
But I mean, I mean, that's a situation anyway, go outside, I mean, no matter where it hooks on, probably not.
No.
But at least you'd be able to see if it was running. Or if it's just...
True. Yeah, uh, well, that seems like a good first step is get, get it dug up a place or two in the trees and see where it's at. Make sure it's in there.
See if you can find it.
And if it goes a separate route, maybe they'd have to dig it up out here somewhere east and...
What do you mean a separate route, going all the way to the river, you think? Yeah, I wonder if it does. You think it's possible it could do that? Well, the, the river, the level of the river is getting low enough. A guy could, uh, venture down there and see if there's another pipe coming out. Jim's been up and down that. He knows where this one dumps out.
Mhm.
If he's looked further east, I don't have, I don't know.
Well, that'd be the, I'd, uh, have Doug get ahold of Jim so he could show him where it dumps out down below. And then they could at least maybe while they're out there, look and see if there is a second. But whatever we gotta do, we gotta do something. This thing's been bubbling for...
Well, that's where, this is, if it was installed as it shows here, the logical answer is to install a parallel tile outside the trees.
Yeah, that'd be the logical...
But if it hasn't been installed that way, that's what we gotta figure out.
Bingo.
So I'll, I'll talk to Doug yet this morning hopefully.
Okay.
And get something scheduled.
I'm good with that.
Yep.
You good with that, Dennis?
I guess.
If it's gonna alleviate the problem?
Those buffalo are gonna starve to death pretty soon if we don't get that hole closed.
Well, I, I hope I know timing with Doug this morning.
Okay.
So, uh...
So I'll be in touch with Doug then.
Okay.
Have him give me all our money, get done rolling that job.
Okay.
All right?
Okay.
Thanks.
That'd work. Thank you.
Anything else on drainage? I think so.
I have one other question for you.
Yeah.
The, uh...
Thanks.
Your little drone that you flew?
Yeah.
What do you think, you know, when we talked the, about the dips that comes off above Fairway?
Yep.
Um, is there any way you can, we can see what that looks like because...
Sure.
All that water that's gonna come from up north from, uh, tiles and I'm worried that trees of, and the trees through there are getting huge and that's really not our area, right?
No, it's the city.
Right, city.
I think that with your little drone, it'd be a good thing to show them from above and look at this. Because sooner or later, that thing's gonna be full.
Mhm.
Of course, the city looks at it, it's a natural buffer for their little three pipes that go underneath that road, so if you clean that out, it's just gonna get there quicker and flood the city waters.
But the other side of the point is, uh, when we were talking to them about the Fairway building, their, uh, attorney or their guy from Fairway said that he knew somebody with the DNR that would help get some of that dirt cleaned out of that lagoon. And we still don't have any... Cause that water has, comes down that hill, under the highway, by Fairway, then it has to fill that lagoon up to go over the moat that's right behind Harklow's house. And we were, had talked about trying to get some access so that the water could run.
Run better.
I mean, that's, we're talking about putting another tile up there that'll get more water to come that way. And I guess I'd just be interested to see what it is from the highway up to the cemetery.
I think what would be good, in, in less than an hour, we could fly from the river up to the highway, up through where the trees are and up to where it's clear in the field.
Yeah, up where we take care of it.
Yes.
Could you do that?
Yes.
You can?
Yeah, I, I'll see which days our guys are gonna be down here this week.
Well, I think it would be well worth our time to be able to show them.
Yes.
That's the problem that, you know, um...
Yep.
I agree.
And I, and we just figured out last week, we're gonna put all our videos on YouTube. So if you go to YouTube and Jacobson Westergaard, um, you'll be able to look at any of the districts that we've flown, so...
Okay.
Good one.
Very good music. Oh, see, there you go, right?
Yeah.
There's that video thing getting more and more...
Yeah, that's good.
Yes, that's right. Like I told you guys, I'm sure, he's a young guy, becoming an engineer, but he said he's been training all his life for that job.
Well, that's a good, good idea, so that's what...
Most people love that, you know?
Yeah, yeah. One of these days, it's probably gonna become work to him, but, but...
Oh, I doubt it.
Right now. You're still playing with them.
Yeah, yeah, but, no, that's great, it's getting paid a little bit.
There you go, exactly.
You'll always be fine.
You bet, that's good. I'll just...
That's why when you talk about...
Uh, Mr. Chairman? Do we need a motion to go on a drainage, are we done?
Yeah, I don't blame them.
Please get...
Motion to go on a drainage?
All in favor?
Aye.
We're on a drainage request for a short intervention.
A short recess? I wanna get the drainage, the tiles.
Hey, just wanted you to hand me a couple of your, I'll show you, Carl's story, he's up in Ohio.
Yes, oh, okay. You wanted to...
I just, a couple of your maps. Just a couple of your maps.